Okay, well, I'd like to call this meeting the Town Council to order. We apologize for being a few minutes late, but thank you for bearing with us. If you could rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have standing room only today, huh? Voting Day, the official ballot vote will be held on Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the three polling locations, the James Mastercola Upper Elementary School, the Merrimack Middle School, and St. John Newman's Church. Please contact the Town Clerk's Office at 424-3651 or visit the New Hampshire Secretary of State's website to find your specific polling location if you have any questions. And just as a side note, there are three ballots this year because we have our special state election to fill the state rep seat vacated by Dick Kench. So there'll be a school ballot, a town ballot, and a state ballot. So make sure you get all three of them, and please come out and vote. It's critically important, especially for those of us on the ballot, that people come out and vote. Just seems so bad when nobody votes for you. But, um, on behalf of the Merrimack Town Council, I would like to offer our sincere condolences to the family and friends of Linda Hall, who passed away on Saturday, March 27th, at the age of 77. Linda worked alongside Diane Trippett as the deputy town clerk and tax collector for almost 17 years. Linda was truly a considerate, compassionate, and empathetic person that cared deeply for Upcoming Town Council meetings, Thursday, April 22nd at 7:00 p.m., Thursday, May 13th at 7:00 p.m., and Thursday, May 27th at 7:00 p.m. They're all regular meetings. Paul, did you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank everybody and apologize for any inconvenience for closing the transfer station this afternoon may have caused. Good news is the transfer station will reopen tomorrow for normal business hours, and will be running normal business hours for the future. Transportation and Recycling Center will begin a summer operation hours starting Thursday, April 15th, one week from tonight, and continue through Thursday, September 30th. During the time, the operating hours will be on Thursday at the facility will begin at 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The facility will continue with normal hours, 8:00 in the morning to 4:00 p.m., Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. On April 2nd, the Town of Merrimack officially celebrated its 275th anniversary. The committee was formed, and they have planned a series of community events and activities that will run through April through October 2021. We encourage you to visit the website, 275th Anniversary, at www.merrimacknh.gov/275th. Tomorrow will be a kickoff event for the celebration, where we will be reading Proclamations, awarding the Boston Kane recipient. There was a flag that was flown over the Capitol in State House in Concord that will be presented to the Town Council as well. Those festivities start at 3:30 tomorrow at Abbey Griffin Park. The filing period for property tax exemptions and tax credit is coming to a close. The deadline to file is Thursday, April 15th. The Assessing Department is happy to help anyone with questions at 424-5136, or you can swing by and see them at their window. I also want to make a public service announcement. The Town Hall is open for business. We are fully open. Our tax windows and our tax collector and our motor vehicle windows are fully open, and our Assessing Department windows are fully open, as well as Community Development and DPW downstairs in the lower level, and Finance as well. We've been getting several calls asking, "Do I have to make an appointment?" You do not have to make an appointment. It's business as usual. Please, if you have business with the Town, we are open to serve the residents of the Town of Merrimack. The Town of Bedford has posted a daily closure on Gage Girls Road between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. for reconstruction during the next four weeks. Bedford will be reconstructing and then paving the section of gravel road between Merrimack Town Line and Amber Lane in Bedford. The Merrimack Solid Waste Recycling Center will remain open during the times of reconstruction. And finally, tomorrow, absentee ballots for the April 13th Town and Special State Election will be pre-processed tomorrow, Friday, April 9th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the Merrimack High School. The public is more than welcome to observe the process. Thank you.
Okay. I also want to point out, since I'm delinquent in doing so, that Lon Woods is excused tonight, as well as Eileen Cabanelle. Both of them have issues they need to deal with. Are there any other comments or questions at this point? Peter?
Yeah, Paul, I'm just curious if we have an update on the things around Wildcat Falls and Curry Road area? And I know it's going to be a warm weekend this weekend, but any of those problem areas we had over the last year, if you have any update on that?
I could tell you that the signs have been placed in the Curry Road neighborhood. The restricted parking for Merrimack residents begin May 15th, so we're a little bit out with that. Placards for the residents to get their two placards is in the Town Manager's office, and they're here right now, as well as if they're going to have special events or parties, so to speak. These, we have ordered them, and we've given them to the Police Department, so the Police Department are in. They have those for those special events from May 15th to September. I'm sure that the Police Department will be doing patrols and making sure everything is okay. I didn't hear anything for the last couple of weekends. Police, the Chief of Police is in the back, that's why I keep looking out there, and he's shaking and said, "No." It's been, knock on wood.
Quiet so far.
Quiet so far.
Comments from the press and public? Does anybody want to address the council at this point, this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to recognition, resignations, and retirements. We have two recognitions of resignations today. The first is Lou LaPointe, in recognition for his service after more than 23 years of full-time service with the Town of Merrimack. You probably just go up there, I can come around and...
So presented to Lou LaPointe in recognition of the loyal and dedicated full-time service which you have contributed for more than 23 years to the Town of Merrimack, Highway and Parks Maintenance Division of the Public Works Department. Dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the Town of Merrimack. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty from August 17 of 1997 to March 31 of 2021. That's a little bit of time. Presented by the Merrimack Town Council and Town Manager. So thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lori Barrett, Operations Manager at the Highway Division, and I was Lou's supervisor for the past five and a half years. Lou actually started with the Town in June of 1995 as a part-time recycling attendant, so he's done more years than that. He worked primarily on the crew maintaining over 50 acres of athletic fields, as well as parks and town trails. As you know, the Public Works Department in general impacts the quality of life for all Town residents, but in particular, the parks and the open spaces in Town provide fun, free recreational opportunities for everyone, and we definitely witnessed the importance of those these past year. Some of the projects Lou was involved in were restoring the fields of VICE baseball and Vets football fields. He restored most of the wooden signs labeling the town parks and trails, and during the 2006 Mother's Day flood, he was a big part of the emergency restoration efforts. These are only a few of the many projects that Lou was involved in over the years. And then winter would come, and Lou would spend hours, weeks, he spent years, plowing for the town. There's no denying the long hours put in during plowing operations and the effort it takes to keep ahead of the snow. Lou was also a certified scale operator, who helped out many days and weekends at the transfer station. You may have seen him there once or twice. As an employee, Lou was always eager and willing to learn. He was a road scholar and a safety champion through the UNH T Squared Program. He was also a member of the Joint Law Safety Committee, and he held various leadership roles in the APSME Union. Lou, as you move forward in your journey, may luck and success always be with you.
How much time do I have? No, I'm kidding. Well, okay. Obviously, it's been a long road. I appreciate everything that the Town of Merrimack has offered me. I'm going to miss a lot of the people that I work with and the residents that I get to see at the transfer station and the parks and all that stuff, but it was time to move on, and, once again, I appreciate everything that everybody has done for me. Thank you.
We have another presentation tonight, which is for John Spence. So Chief, do you want to say a few words before I turn to the mic?
That'd be great, thank you. So John is our Assistant Communications Supervisor, which means he supervises the dispatch center. We're in charge of scheduling, training, he knows all the permits for the Town, the alarm permits, pistol permits. But basically, he oversees that whole division, which is quite a big job. What a lot of people don't know about John, John started his career in radio broadcasts. He was kind of a rock god back in the day, apparently. I was a little bit too young for that, but apparently CGY was his big show, and he was really respected there, and I think he had quite a bit of a following. John is very involved in racing as well. He calls races at various tracks around New England. John spent nearly 24 years with us. He had two different stints, one for six years, and then left, and then he came back to the good place, right? He missed us, and he came back for 18 years, continued service. He has over 31 years of experience in emergency communication dispatching, from Nashville Fire, Hollis, and so forth and so on. Bottom line is that we're going to miss having John around. We always had a lot of good laughs, especially on Mondays after the Giants lose, because he's an avid, avid Giants fan. You knew I had to say something about that. So, but bottom line is, John's one of those guys that you just like to have a conversation with, and he's got some great stories from the past, and we're going to miss him. So John, thank you for keeping the Town safe, and the firefighters, and the officers, and the residents safe with your service to the dispatch center. Thank you.
We have a plaque for John, but it sounds like we might have the dates not completely filled in. This is just for your latest stint here in Town. Presented to John H. Spence in recognition of the loyal and dedicated full-time service which you have contributed for almost 18 years to the Communications Division of the Town of Merrimack Police Department. Your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the Town of Merrimack. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty May 4th, 2003 to March 31, 2021. Presented by the Merrimack Town Council and the Town Manager. So John, thank you very much for your...
Want to talk Giants football, Pete? Attaboy, Charlie, three. Came to the Town in 1991. Chief Joe Devine was the guy that was in charge, and was blessed to be hired by the Town of Merrimack. I was very grateful back then. I left here in '03. I had the opportunity, I take that back, I left in '97, came back in '03, and I had the opportunity to come back where I really wanted to be. And the last 18 years has been quite an experience for me, going from just being a regular shift dispatcher to an assistant supervisor. And I was blessed to work under some great people. I am very, very touched by the send-off they gave me last Wednesday, both PD and the Fire Department. Very grateful, feel blessed. And that's about all I got to say. Thank you very, very much to the Town of Merrimack.
Mr. Chair, I think I'd be remiss if John walked out of here and I didn't say anything. I worked with John a number of years when he was obviously dispatching, but also our supervisor, and John and I worked together, and I watched all the years that he put in, nights, weekends. I watched him handle calls, very hard things. He's dealt with some tough personnel issues, people had some, there was some heartbreak along the way, but John handled it like a champ, and working with him was always great, and I know he'll be missed over there. And like we mentioned, a lot of laughs, Patriots, Giants, back and forth in the year. The two years the Giants won, he was insufferable for about nine months or so, okay? So, but John, good luck, and it was awesome working with you. We are going to miss you, and I wish you the best, my friend. And Terry, thanks for sharing him for so long. I know you watched, you watched him go out the door late nights and stuff, so, thanks again, John.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much, both of you. We really appreciate the time and energy and effort you put into the Town of Merrimack, and we wish you both very well in your future endeavors. Brings us to our next item on the agenda, the appointments. We have an appointment with, annual review with the Highway Safety Committee. I was trying to figure out why the Chief was walking forward. I didn't read carefully enough further along.
I think they award the award appointments.
Per the Town of Merrimack Charter, Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be a review with the Highway Safety Committee. This agenda item is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, and anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act on. So Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. Thanks for having me here. Just so everyone knows what the Highway Safety Committee does, our goal is to make sure to have a highway safety program defined to reduce traffic accidents and any deaths and injuries that are resulting from traffic. So we really focus on the safety aspect of it. Sometimes we get a lot of requests from residents that doesn't have any safety aspect to it, and that's what we really focus on. We follow standards, the nationally accredited standards, on the uniform traffic control. And this past year was a little bit slower than usual. We did have quite a lot of banter about Curry Road area, and whether that was a safety issue or not, and thankfully, the Town Council enacted a residents-only provision in there. That was one of the things we addressed this past year. Also, Hadley Road, we were able to install no parking signs during school hours to vent high school students parking up there, it was blocking the flow of emergency vehicles, plows, and such. So those are the two main things that we dealt with this past year. In the coming year, we'll be working closely with DPW on the TAP grants and sidewalk projects that we're looking forward to. Hopefully, we can finally get the project done, right, Don? And that's about it. Mostly, if residents have any concerns, they can email myself or the Highway Department, and then we can get the process going. But like I said, I just want to reiterate, it's dealing with safety issues. I mean, everyone would like a stop sign or a speed bump in the neighborhood, but sometimes it just doesn't fit that way.
Well, and this time of year, we have some anti-speed bumps in some of the roads, too, right?
This is correct.
We could sometimes call them potholes, but they're slowing me down, at least, that's for sure.
Do you have any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions for the Chief relative to the Safety Committee? You're the liaison to the Safety Committee, right?
It's a very heavy schedule in the latest...
We like to keep our hours, our meetings down to one hour or less.
And he does a pretty good job at it. Not often.
When need arises, as necessary. So every request has to go through us, then we obviously bring it to the Town Council's approval. So usually, we vet a lot of them.
So you guys are involved with any street signs or any of that kind of stuff as well, right?
Any requests for a street sign, other than new development.
I've heard of people wanting to put up signs to slow down because of kids in the area and things like that.
Right.
Any of those kinds of signs would have to go through the Safety Committee first.
Correct, and a lot of those signs, you know, through national data that they collected, really don't affect traffic flow. So a lot of times, it's a denial, then we explain why.
Yep, okay. So is there anything else that we should be considering or thinking about, or future issues, like a Curry Road type thing you might see coming up the road?
I think we're going to be good.
Okay.
Hopefully, and I know there's a couple of requests that Don from DPW has, and then we'll work to get those going soon. All right.
Okay.
Simple enough.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, have a good day.
You're awesome.
Short and sweet. That brings us to, we don't have any public hearings for tonight, legislative updates from state reps. Not seeing any in the audience.
Oh, they're all still busy.
And I haven't, don't recall seeing anything, that I received an email, which... Town Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to formally congratulate the following employees achieving ranking at the UNH T Squared New Hampshire Road Scholar Program. Kevin Motney and John Provost have achieved the ranks of Road Scholar I. Jake Stevens has achieved the rank of Road Scholar II. Robert Colimo has achieved the rank of Safety Champion and Road Scholar I. Lou LaPointe, as was mentioned, has received the rank of Safety Champion. Don Talamla has achieved the rank of Master Road Scholar II. The New Hampshire Road Scholar Program establishes education and training requirements for municipal-level highway practitioners, and recognizes those who have successfully completed specific course load at UNH T2 Center Workshops. Congratulations to all those people. One other achievement in the DPW Public Works Division. Public Works Director Kyle Fox has been nominated for recognition by the Rotary Club of Merrimack in its Annual Excellence in the Workplace Program. Want to tell Kyle, "Well done." Our thanks to Brian Snow for making this nomination. The Rotary values all occupations and takes the opportunity to public recognize several people who have personally demonstrated the value of their occupation. The 2021 recognition will be held remotely on Thursday, April 15th. Well done, Kyle, and congratulations. It's a great honor.
Mr. Chair? I just want to comment, because I think it's well-deserved for Kyle. When we look at all the projects we've had in the infrastructure, he's kept going, fixed, and renewed, and then I look at the entire staff of the DPW and so forth, who do a great job, and you know, you look at all the certifications they work on, you know, we're just, we've got a good group over there.
Any other questions for the Town Managers' Report, comments? It'll be interesting to see how that thing goes. I was also nominated for that award, which I thought was kind of interesting. So we'll see where that goes. So where am I? So we did, let me go back to this point. We don't have any consent agenda or old business tonight. Starting off with new business, we have a reappointment of the Merrimack representative to the National Regional Planning Commission. The Town Council to consider the reappointment of Karen Elmer as one of Merrimack's representatives to the National Regional Planning Commission, as recommended by the Merrimack Planning Board, pursuant to RSA 36:46 Roman numeral III.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Bill and seconded by Nancy. Do you want to speak to it?
Absolutely. Karen Elmer is a planner with the Town of Bedford. She's been very active with the NRPC now for coming up on 10 years. She's an important, excuse me, she's an important person within the commission. She's actually served as chair previously. She's been part of the executive board. She brings a myriad of experience to the position, but above all, she is, she's committed to representing our community on the commission with passion and diligence. So, skill set aside, I was, I know there was some concern about whether or not she would reappoint. The fact that she decided to re-up again, I think, is a credit to her, the fact that she has the time to do it, but also her commitment to serving the community. It's deeply appreciated. So enthusiastically support her renomination, Mr. Chairman.
Awesome. Any other comments? We have been in communication with her, received a couple of letters, that she's very anxious to continue the job, and, but she couldn't be here tonight, so she'll stop by Town Hall and have one of the Town Clerks swear her in for the next three-year term. I will point out, before we vote, that there are four vacancies, or four positions on the NRPC in Merrimack. We only, I only knew of three until a couple of days ago. So we do have an open position to appoint. If someone is, has an interest or desire to serve on the National Regional Planning Commission Board and represent Merrimack, please let us know. Send a note in to Becky Thompson at the Town Hall, or to Paul McCalle, or myself, anybody, and we'll look into forwarding that. But there is another position available. It's been vacant for a while, as far as I'm concerned, because I didn't even realize we had a fourth, but we do. So let's get that representation in there if we can.
And what I would say, Mr. Chairman, is they meet quarterly.
Yeah, it's not super frequent.
So, but the meetings are interesting. You are exposed to a variety of different people from different parts of the national region, from as far west as Wilton to as far east as Pelham. I absolutely enjoy, it's a good opportunity to connect and network with people there, and then talk about and learn about issues going on in people's respective communities as well. So, you know, tremendous learning opportunity as well by serving as a commissioner, but the real value is the role that they have on the transportation plan as it relates to our community, and we're going to be, you know, the 10-year plan is constantly being, is constantly evolving every year, as I'm sure our Deputy DPW Director, Don Talamla, can attest to, and having an additional person being there to make sure that Merrimack is appropriately represented during those particular discussions, I think, would be invaluable. So, so it's like I said, four meetings, four meetings out of the year, and it's right in Nashville. They have a new facility, and they just have a new office that they just opened within the last year. Beautiful facility, easy to get to, parking, so it's a good location to be able to get in, get out of, to go to a meeting. So if regional planning is of interest, please make an application to Becky Thompson at the Town Manager's Office, and we can go from there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So if there's no other comments, we'll call for a vote on reappointing Karen Elmer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or abstaining? So that passes 6-0-0, and this is her appointment paper. You can pass it around to sign. Okay, good. So congratulations, Karen, and thank you for your time and effort. So next on the agenda is a release of easement deeds for Edgbrook Heights, submitted by Edgbrook Heights and Wixton Properties, a request that the Town Council approve the release of certain sewer easement deeds for sewer lines never developed. And I think, Don, you were going to talk to us about this, please. Not sure which is easier to see, the screen or the wall.
We all have to start at the beginning, that's not what it demands. Sorry.
Great.
I missed my mouse. I'm not used to that.
You and me both. I hate those pads. My latest computer has a huge pad right there where my thumb is, and so I'm constantly moving the cursor to the wrong spot.
Turn it off. Turn it off.
Okay.
Okay.
That's technical. There's no switch on the side.
Bring it to me.
So this began, actually, last October with Attorney Brad Westgate had presented to the Town Manager... to the Town Manager the proposal to eliminate this sewer easement that runs through their property. Unfortunately, Mr. Westgate is not able to be here tonight, but Bernie Plant is here, representing the Melton Associates, so they're here. Let me give you a little bit of background on this. This property is in South Merrimack. It's on the east side of the Daniel Webster Highway, wedged between the Daniel Webster and the Merrimack River and the railroad. And also, one of the lines is that, is the Pennechuck Brook, which flows along one side, so they're surrounded. The other building, this large building up here is the Old Nashua Corp., just to give you a placement of where this is in the town, basically. A number of years ago, there was a sewer master plan. It was called the Hamilton Study. And they had a proposal that came down through the backside of Nashua Corp., from the plant to the Nashua Corp., and through this property, and ran along the edge of the Pennechuck Brook, came out, and then was going on along the west side of Daniel Webster all the way down, and the thought was to go all the way down to Pennechuck Brook, uh, Pennechuck Square, I'm sorry. And a lot of the parcels had been purchased, you know, easements had been purchased. It's my understanding that back in 2017, a lot of those easements have already been given back, that they decided not to go with the Hamilton Plan when the new sewer master plan was accepted in 2013. And that put the interceptor down, the sewer interceptor down Continental Boulevard, and there was one going down Daniel Webster Highway, which is where a lot of the properties on the west side of Daniel Webster Highway have tied into through the past years. You know, the Bowers Landing and all of that development has tied in along the interceptor that's along Daniel Webster. So basically, this is the last piece, one of the last pieces of the sewer interceptor from, from before, and it was determined that, a number of years ago, that we didn't need this easement anymore. So this is the property itself that they have resubdivided. They took the other parcels and they resubdivided. So now we've got four different lots here with a Benning Court, which is a private road. This won't be town road. And our easement now is only a little piece over here, which is where they're gonna be pumping all of their septic up to. And if you recall, last year, last summer, they started this project, and one of the first things that they did was to bring the sewer across Daniel Webster Highway. So that's the way the sewer will be directed at this point, you know, moving forward. And it was determined that there's enough sewage for all of the Edgbrook properties to be able to accommodate to come down this sewer interceptor that's on Daniel Webster Highway. That determination was made a number of years ago. So the area we're talking about in particular, this is a blow-up of the plan. This is the, this yellow line coming down through is the existing sewer easement, which is no longer needed. This is, again, the Nashua Corp. is up here. This other little yellow piece up here is also going to be released. That was from a previous plan. And this pink area here is what we will have for an easement today. And that's where it has a sewer manhole that connects all of the Edgbrook properties, and comes right across the street to sewer manhole that's in front of the Dunkin' Donuts, if you're familiar with that. So that's where it's gonna tie in. The next piece, this continues all the way down, this sewer easement, 20-foot wide, continues all the way down. And this piece down here is owned by the State of New Hampshire. And that was for the circumfren-
Circumfential Highway.
Highway, which I can never say, anyway. So that is what they're asking to release. I've been around and around, I've done not a lot of research. I've put many hours into the research of this. I've worked back and forth with Attorney Brad Westgate. And then once he had answered all my questions, I then posed all of my questions to Carrie Anne, our attorney. And we went back and forth, and I went back and forth with Brad a couple times. So, we have hashed this out over and over. So, I finally, Carrie Anne gave her blessing. I believe I had attached her email in with your correspondence, and she's fine with the way that they have come out with this. And I did, I did put this last one together. It doesn't show up real well, but it kind of, I put the two sheets together, and it does show the whole sewer line that we're asking to relieve. And there's a little yellow dot up there for that one. So.
So that, that line goes to Nashua Corp. property, but there was never anything built there either, or does it end at that point?
Correct. There is nothing built there, and there were issues with that easement, and we were not given a permission. It was a whole series of events. It was long and arduous, believe me, going back and forth. But the result was, we could not construct anything within that easement anymore. It wasn't big enough for us to do anything with. And it just didn't make sense to have that whole line where we have the one on Daniel Webster already.
Right. Okay. Penny?
Dawn, did you say, back for the original, the easement that's currently there?
Is your mic on?
It is. Yeah. That it's supposed to go across country. Did you say to Pennechuck Square?
Yes. That's my understanding.
That's a circuitous route, it seems to me, but I just wanted to make sure I understood you.
It was called the Hamilton Study. I have no, no idea.
Before our time, right?
Something like that.
Maybe not.
I meant mine and Dawn. She hasn't been here that long either.
Almost five years.
Well, that's great.
Almost.
I've been on this silly board for 15, but.
Silly.
Silly. Well, we were a Board of Selectmen at one point, but.
So tonight, we're asking for the release of sewer easements, and to authorize the execution and recordation of the release of sewer easements, and to authorize the Town Manager to sign as your agent, is what we're asking for.
There you go. And, okay. Any other, for you to sign, or for Eileen to sign?
For the Town, authorize the Town Manager to sign as your agent.
Right.
Second.
Moved by Nancy and seconded by Peter to authorize the Town Manager to sign the release of sewer easement.
And authorize the signature, right. And I think it's, it's been well-presented. It makes perfect sense. And it's reassuring to know that you've checked and double-checked, and I trust your research, and that of our attorney, so there's no reason not to.
Okay. If there's no other comments, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Melton. We appreciate it. Project's been a long time coming. It's good to see that things are developing at this point. And so the next thing on our agenda is a relocation of a drainage easement, again with Deputy DPW, Deputy PW Director and Town Engineer Don Talamla. The Town Council to consider the relocation of a drainage easement to ensure a building permit can be issued for a single-car detached garage project, and will not interfere with the new location of the drainage easement. Dawn?
Yes, I'm here tonight with Glenn Amadeo. He lives at 14 Acacia Street, which is about in the middle of the town. That's the best way I can explain it. When I looked graphically, he's, oh, smack dab in the middle. So if you look to, on the graphic map, the kind of reddish line that I've got shown here is the Turkey Hill that comes down. The other reddish line is Amherst Road, down here on the south. And they converge, and then, of course, down, way down here, there's the Executive Park Drive and Continental Boulevard, just to give you an idea of where he's at. So his property is this yellow spot right here in the middle of that, that drawing. And his subdivision was part of the Brookfield Acres II subdivision, long ago and far away, back in the 1974. He purchased these two lots here, and it's a little hard to see on, on this map, because it was so far away, so I kind of blew that map up a little bit. And it had an easement on both sides of that line that was dividing those two lots, and then came along the backside. And this was a drainage easement that came in through here. And this was not uncommon for that time period, to just put on an easement wherever was convenient for them to put on an easement, not necessarily where it needs to be. So, these two lots then got combined into one lot, and they're now, they're known as 73 on this plan. And they built their home on, on this parcel here. What they would like to do, this is their house today, and I apologize, I flipped 90 degrees on you, because the surveyors flipped the screen, and it would have been sideways if I had done that. So, here's his house today, and here's his driveway coming in and out. And here, in the reddish pink, is the existing easement. He would like to put a garage in this area, another garage. He needs, he needs some more room. So his proposal, when he came to me, was to come down and do this yellow section, and tie back in to the original easement along the back line. But what this does is it moves the easement into the wetland area where it actually belongs, and not in his upland of his lot, where he can't use it, because he can't use this piece of land. He can't do anything with it. You know, he can't build on it. He owns it, but he can't build on it, because there's an easement on it. So, he's came in with a proposal to be able to move it, so that he can be able to have his, his garage there. And we've accepted that proposal. And again, he has provided the plan, he's provided the easement documents. I've sent them all out, and they were reviewed by Steve Whitney, for Carrie Anne. Steve Whitney works for her, or under her. And he's reviewed them. We went back and forth. So, he's happy with the way they have been executed, or, so we are again asking to have you release the original easement, and then we'll accept.
In favor of a new one?
Yes. So you'll be signing the release of the easement. And again, we would ask to have a Town Manager to sign the easement for you.
So a drainage easement is just a plot to allow for you to put pipes or something in, or, I mean, this is obviously not a water drainage, surface water drainage type of an easement, that you can just move?
Right. This line right through here is, is the wetland line. So everything on this side of it is the wetland. There is actually a ditch line that runs through this section up, up here towards the road. There is a ditch line that runs through there. So that will remain.
But what would you do with this easement if you were gonna do something with it? Put in a drainage pipe, or?
If we had to, yes. Or use it as treatment, if, I mean, probably.
So I guess I'm trying to understand what the effect of moving it is. What, I mean, or why, why one might not want to, or why one?
Why would be to help, to be able to allow him to use the upland part of his lot.
I understand that piece, but, but as far as the easement itself is concerned?
Are there any reasons why we should not?
No.
Nope. I think, I think, I don't want to speak for Tom, but the way I understood it is, why need it at all, if it's?
Do we need the easement? Are we gonna use it for something, or is it?
I don't have any immediate plans for it, but if we were to release that, we've got this other whole section that deals with other people up through there. So, keep it contiguous. Actually, the drainage breaks. It comes down this way, and it goes out that way. So there's, there's a division right, right at the top here. It goes one way and the other way.
Define the top, I'm sorry.
Topography, it rises up towards the back. So it slopes, and everything drains around to this side, and then it drains around to that side.
Well, I, Dawn, you don't see Kyle standing behind you, so if you could just let Kyle talk, I think he has an answer of why we still would want that.
Yeah, so the reason, primary reason we would still want an easement, typical of many subdivisions from this era, like Dawn said, the drainage was designed to shed into the backyards, and we know a fair number of those properties that have those kind of issues. What it does is it gives us the right to maintain that ditch line in the future, to make sure the drainage keeps flowing. The likelihood of us needing to put pipes or physical drainage in there are pretty small in this one, but it gives us the, the protection to be able to, to clean out the stream, get on the property, and clean out the ditch line, and keep the water flowing.
So was, was that property 74 ever even a buildable lot, if that's all wetland to this, the bottom of that picture?
I don't believe so, from what I've seen.
We're careful not to make any determination about buildable lots. With, with money, anything is buildable, we find.
I don't know where the extent of that wetland goes, but.
It was combined, so.
It was divided at some point.
It is no more. It is one lot.
Right. No, that's fine.
And I didn't go beyond that point.
If you guys are comfortable with being able to use this if you need it, then I'm okay with it. I was just trying to understand.
There is a ditch line through there, which we do, drains into our catch basin.
And, and the fact that that's in the wetlands doesn't cause you any trouble with being able to go in and do things?
No, not for what it is.
Jurisdictional wetlands you can disturb, since you're the masters?
With permissions.
From the state, or from what?
From the state, yes.
Oh, okay. Just checking.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? We need a motion to accept the changes in the easement, Mr. Chair, and allow the Town Manager to sign any paperwork necessary?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Peter and seconded by Barbara this time. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Amadeo.
Yeah, have fun with that garage. Okay. That brings us to number four on our agenda, wastewater treatment facility, Phase Three Bond update. Submitted by Deputy Public Works Director, Director, Wastewaters slash wastewater, Sarita Croce, and Public Works Director Kyle Fox, the Town Council to receive an update on the bid process for the wastewater treatment funds, Phase Three Bond, and the next steps moving forward.
Tonight, we'd like to present to the Town Council an update on how the project is going. I know that this seems like forever ago that we went out and got our first $13.1 million dollars approved by the town. And then we got another, we asked the town for another $9.5 million, and they approved that as well. Sarita's here tonight to give the overall, we have, I don't want to steal too much of a thunder, but we had gone out to bid.
You can steal the thunder. Please do. Please do.
We've gone out to bid, and the climate for bidding right now, whether it's for construction projects, or excavation, or anything, seems to be gone haywire. So we'd like to present the Town Council with an update of where we stand as it relates to the bid versus what we got for bonding. So, I think I talked long enough to get.
Can you define haywire, meaning?
We will, we will define haywire for you.
You'll understand very well.
That's part of the explanation. Okay.
Yeah, that's part of the explanation. So, oh, and of course, I have these for you.
Which you haven't passed out.
I'm sorry.
I got two. Anybody need another one? You want one? We got plenty of these, if you want one.
Oh, one of them is, Kyle, one of them is for you, too.
You need one?
I have to say, I'm not that excited about tonight. So, thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening, and I'm so glad that Mr. McCauley has taken my thunder away. So very happy about it. What I'd like to do tonight is I would like to do a very brief, one-slide overview of the project, just in case anybody's forgotten about it. Talk about the funding. Talk about the funding and provide a comparison of the bid that we received versus the budget. And then, of course, some time for questions and answers and discussion. So back in two thousand eighteen, when I first came to you, we talked about a facility that was approaching fifty years old. That's the wastewater treatment plant where much of the infrastructure at the facility was, had not been replaced. And when you look at infrastructure, you look at infrastructure from a perspective of being replaced after between twenty and thirty years. So this year on May fifteenth, the wastewater treatment plant will be fifty-one years old. So we are well beyond the twenty and even thirty years. So our first goal of this project was to replace that aging infrastructure that had not been replaced to date. The second goal was to address safety concerns associated with the, the infrastructure and the operations there. The third goal was to address code-related deficiencies. So in nineteen seventy, when the plant was built, it was built according to code. But in two thousand twenty, perhaps code has changed and so things weren't to code at that point. So some of the examples of code-related deficiencies are electrical code, as well as we were hoping to be able to make the headworks building compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA code. And then the last issue, and we had that wonderful demonstration a couple of times of our flushable wipes that have overtaken almost every wastewater treatment plant in the country. And we wanted to address that as well. And the idea behind that is to address it before these flushable wipes, which, you know, is an oxymoron because they're, they're flushable, but they don't degrade. To make sure that these, these wipes did not impact our operations by plugging our pumps, plugging our lines. So thankfully, all of you approved the project and we had two town ballot votes. The first vote was in April of two thousand nineteen and the town graciously ratified thirteen point one million dollars. The second vote was in June two thousand twenty and again, the town graciously ratified nine point five two million dollars for a total of twenty-two point six two million dollars. One would think, if you don't really know what goes into these projects, that all that twenty-two point six two million dollars would go into the actual infrastructure replacement. And that's not necessarily the case. So in this case, one point five five million dollars, which has been spent, was spent on the design of the entire project. And that also included a value engineering exercise that was about seventy-four thousand dollars. Now we have construction administration. So this is when you execute the project, the SRF loan process requires that you have an engineer who follows the process. And this ends up being the engineer of record on the project. This is the guy who signs and stamps the drawing. If anything happens, they make sure that it's addressed. And then they also provide a project representative to see all the activities that are going on. Along with that are legal administrative and financing fees. So they're estimated here as being a total of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So what you have remaining is eighteen point three five million. Now, out of that eighteen point three five million, the SRF process requires that we have five percent in contingency. So that's eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That leaves us with a whopping seventeen point four eight million. So we, we prepared bids with our engineer, Wright Pierce, and the bid documents were divided into a couple of categories. We had a base bid and the base bid included upgrading the main pump station, upgrading two offsite pump stations that are our largest pump stations, so Hegan and Thornton's Ferry. Building a new influence screenings building to take care of those flushable wipes, replacement of clarifier mechanisms. Now, clarifiers are just these big tanks that help separate the solids from the liquid so you can discharge clean water. Replace our two emergency generators that are original to the facility with two new emergency generators. Upgrade the compost facility ventilation system. So we started the compost upgrade in the phase two and we weren't able to complete it all. So we were, we were finishing the things that we weren't able to complete. Upgrade the sludge storage tank. When I first presented this, I, I talked about this being very near and dear to my heart because our staff will go inside these tanks and they will physically shovel out sludge to try and clean these tanks. So we were planning to lower this, the height of the tanks to allow us to use a vacuum truck to do it. Chlorine building, electrical upgrade and then miscellaneous piping upgrades and electrical and computer program upgrades throughout the facility. We had a bid alternate A, which was to coat the, the sludge storage tank to help it from degrading from hydrogen sulfide exposure. A bid alternate B was renovation to the headworks building and the administrative spaces as well as bathrooms and a new lab. And that also included a keyless entry system. And the bid alternate C was algae sweeps for the secondary clarifiers. So if you go to the secondary clarifiers, there's algae around them all year wrong, along. And it's from nutrients that are in the wastewater. So you have phosphorus and nitrogen and that makes stuff grow. So what the guys would do is take these big brushes that you use to sweep and they would actually physically scrub the weirs of the clarifier. So the algae sweeps are brushes on steroids. So they have rollers and they just kind of go around and they do the sweeping twenty-four seven for us.
Before you go on, quick question. So when you say alternate, does this mean that these were added on after your initial base criteria?
So yeah, so what we had done is we had figured out that the, we weren't necessarily going to be able to do the entire project in the, with the seventeen point four eight million that was available. So we, we established a base bid. That was all the stuff we absolutely needed. And then the alternates were if the base bid came back favorable, we'd be able to add on some of the other things.
Additional possibilities?
Yes, yes.
Gotcha, thank you.
Along with that, so this is something that we planned from the beginning. These are things that we knew we might not be able to get accomplished, these alternate bids. Or is it something we figured out after the fact?
It's something we figured out in the last year. So we finished the design in October of two, of two thousand eighteen. At that point, we weren't sure. By the time we, I'm sorry, we finished the preliminary design in October of two thousand eighteen, at that time, we weren't sure. We had a, a cost estimate. By the time we finished the design in December of last year, we were, we knew that it was going to be a tough bidding environment for us. And we likely wouldn't be able to complete all the aspects of the project that we wanted. So that's why we developed the alternates A, B and C.
And who, who, just for my own sake, who told us that we should expect the costs that eventually became too short? Who, who's the firm that did that?
Wright Pierce is our engineering firm.
I knew that, okay.
Finley, just if you could get closer to your mic in the future. They're kind of waving at me. Thanks.
So you're suggesting that these are the potential things we might consider not being able to do if we have a shortfall?
Well.
Not that we want to.
Not that we want to.
We skip ahead of the narrative.
Oh, I understand.
No, that's okay, so.
But it has to do with the alternate, that's that whole.
So there's the, there's the message of the day.
So turn the page.
So we turned the page. The, the base bid, so that first slide I showed you with a whole bunch of different things, that came back at twenty-two million, six hundred and eight nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. That is five point two million dollars over the budget we had allocated. The bid with all the bid alternates all put together came back at twenty-four million, six hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars, which is seven point one million dollars over budget. So I don't know what our answers are going to be because we're still working with Wright Pierce to evaluate everything. And what we're trying to do is with Methuen and Wright Pierce come up with a project that hopefully will work, looking at what needs to be done. And we have fifty-year-old infrastructure. And when we were doing the phase two project upgrade, we had time. And now time is definitely running out. So once we have a plan in place, we will come back to Town Council before any construction is set to begin and tell you of our recommend, describe our, or provide you with the recommendations.
Paul?
So the day we opened up bids in March, it was, we knew that they came in at twenty-four million. So just some background for the council and people at home. When I said the bidding environment, only one company bid. And when we went back out and asked Wright Pierce why only one company bid and maybe let's scrap this bid and let's go out later in the year. We were informed that several reasons. One company said, I might bid if you rebid it, I might not bid, I got plenty of work on the seacoast. Another company came in and said, I can't bid it because I'm at my bonding limits, meaning he has too much work. And a third company came in and said, I don't have a project engineer or a project manager who can handle a twenty million dollar project. I have project engineers who can handle five million, but the guy that's handling my big project of a twenty million is on another project and he's tied up for a year, year and a half. So with that, we came back and sat down with Wright Pierce and said, please contact the wind construction, who was the one bidder, and see where we stand at this time. See what their bid, because they just gave us a number, break out their bid for us. That's what we're evaluating right now. We went back to them, they had a meeting today. We went back to Methuen one more time and asked them to break numbers down again for us so we can see what's included in their, their bid package. We wanted to bring this forward to the Town Council as soon as we found out. We know it wasn't good news, but we wanted to bring it to the council so that you're aware and the people in Merrimack are aware that. We are grateful that you gave us the twenty-two point six million dollars. However, we not, might not be able to do everything we said we could do during, when we gave out these budget presentations. So it might be likely that there might be a phase four for this, for these upgrades with the, some of the projects that we can't do. As Sarita has said, we're looking to replace some of our infrastructure that is very old and making those a priority, meaning our pump stations, our headworks building, things of that sort that are a priority, that we know are old, the equipment is old. But we're not going to sacrifice some of the newer technology just to fix and repair some of this other stuff. On a separate note, totally separate, on March eleventh, President Biden signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act. In that, there was one point nine million dollar trillion, one point nine trillion dollar stimulus that was signed. Of that, a hundred and thirty billion dollars is going out to local communities, states and municipalities. They have sixty days to come up with the requirements and send out the first check. And the first check is fifty percent of the total amount that we would get. But that sixty days runs out May eleventh. There's potential there because one of the programs says, and this is all, there's no guidance at all. These are just guidelines that were, people have said. But one of them talks about sewer, infrastructure. But it also talks about water districts. So I don't know if they're going to give the town of Merrimack all this money and then we have to work with our MVD partners? Or are they giving MVD their own money and the town their own money? There's still a lot of questions out there related to the American Rescue Plan Act. I was on a conference call this morning on it and the people, national, national organizations who are dealing with, with Washington, don't have any more answers than this document that I got two and a half weeks ago with it. So just stay tuned, things are changing. That money is earmarked for states and municipalities. This isn't that other money that the president's talking about with infrastructure. This money has already been approved, it's already been passed through Congress, it's already signed into law. This is part of that one point nine, one point nine trillion dollar American relief plan that was there. But like I said, we wanted to bring this to the council's attention as soon as we knew it was going on.
Finley?
This is becoming a habit here. I don't know, I don't know how much we paid Wright Pierce up to this point, but they failed miserably, just as our engineer did when we built the highway garage. I sat for the first couple of months trying to figure out how the value engineering thing, I didn't know the term until that moment in time, of what it was going to take to build a highway garage. And personally, I was ready to come back and tell the council we should scrap it, but we were able to make it work. But we're not talking chump change here, we're talking real money. And, and I don't, again, Wright Pierce tells me that I should be able to get this done for under twenty-three million and they're seven million dollars off. I mean, that's, that's insane. As far as this money from the federal government, right now I owe ninety thousand dollars for the debt that we're curling in. I'm annoyed at that, so I'm just piling that on because I'm not pleased about this right now. So, sorry.
One of the other concerns, why, I'm not defending Wright Pierce on this, but one of the other things is that the subs came in fifty percent higher?
Fifty percent higher.
Fifty percent higher, so that's your electricians, your plumbers and your mechanics and things like that came in fifty percent higher than estimate and.
The, also the, the steel and, you know, our actual equipment came in much higher because the cost of steel has gone up significantly.
Because of. And you know, I, and I truly get all of that. I can see it in lumber prices and everything else, but I just, this is so substantial that I think they were way off in spite of COVID and everything else. I just think they were.
Understood. Bill?
I, I agree with Council Rothausen and I appreciate Sarita's response because now it's going to be my, my question. Are we seeing an uptick in costs based on materials and labor? That was my question, so.
So yes, we are. And Methuen actually gave out this afternoon a summary of some recent bids that they had. And they did the engineering estimate versus the low bidder. One of them was a bid for a job, and these are similar jobs to ours. One of them was a job in Orange, Massachusetts wastewater treatment facility. The engineering estimate was ten point two million, the low bidder was fifteen point three. Another one in Peabody, Mass was fifteen million and the low bidder was seventeen point eight five. Another one in Orleans, Mass was twenty-two point three five, which was the engineering estimate. And it came back at thirty-two point nine three million. And then Hampton, which is a project that Wright Pierce is working on, the engineering estimate was eight point seven and they came back at ten point four six million. So this is within the last year, these are all, all bids that were received. And it wasn't just Wright Pierce that was the engineer on this, these were all, all different engineering companies as well. And the average overall differential in terms of higher was thirty-four percent higher. The bids came back thirty-four percent higher than the engineering estimates on average.
Welcome to inflation. Nancy? The other thing I would suggest, Paul, perhaps contacting Shaheen or Hassan's office to be able to get some guidance or heads up or. Get nothing to lose, they might be able to say nothing, but nothing ventured.
Will do. We will, we will touch base with all of them.
Right, right, just, you know, give us some guidance.
Guidance.
As soon as they hear anything, could they pass along so we can react quickly?
Correct.
But it is, it's beginning inflation, that's what's happening now.
Yeah, the inflation they keep telling us doesn't exist is clearly.
It exists.
Biden is in the backside right now at thirty percent or something. Peter?
Is there a concern about the interest rate on bonds?
Borrowing right now, the, the interest rate's so low that that's also driving potentially some of these projects much higher. Because bond rates are low. I believe that on this, what do we, we're talking less than two percent on a thirty-year bond? That's what, as to SRF, the New Mexico Bond Bank sent some stuff out and I think a twenty-year bond was two point one percent. So borrowing has become.
Paul, have you seen them creep up though?
Actually, no, that's, that was just the latest. I don't have the new numbers because they're going out to bid again, but those numbers were actually falling down and that was a bond bid during COVID. So the, and as you know, mortgage rates are, are low. You know, I saw advertisements for mortgage rates right now and the low twos on thirty-year mortgage if you got good credit. So right now, it's a lot of different factors coming into play. But interest rates at this current time are not bad. I do see them increasing over the next two to three years because it has to, they have to.
So, did you have a question?
It was just, just a comment, so coming full circle, the, the underlying effect with the low interest rates is the reason why we only had one bidder. Because everybody else is taking advantage, everybody else is taking advantage of the low interest rates. And which is why there's, there's no competition, it's.
And there's only certain companies that can do a job. And that's twenty-two million dollars. And we can get companies to do jobs, but twenty-two million dollar job is at that next level and there aren't too many companies that can handle a job like this. And the big thing is, like I said, a couple of the companies were almost maxed out on their bonds because of the low interest rates and other jobs that they have taken. And that's their, when I, when I say bonds with them, is that they have to have surety bonds and, and payment bonds and things of that sort. And they're only allowed a certain amount of money based on their financial statements, even though it's potentially could be a twenty-two million dollar project. They won't. even though it's potentially could be a $22 million project, they won't just say, okay, we're going to increase your bond rating from 200 million to 220 million so you can, 10%, so you can take on the Merrimack job.
Right.
So, you know, that's also a factor is that because of the low interest rates that these companies are out there and they are working. And the other problem is trying to get the skilled labor to do the jobs.
Right. Thank you.
So the gist of it all is that it's going to cost more than we thought? And you're now trying to break it out to see how much you can get done of the older, oldest pieces with the amount of money that we have?
That's correct. So, in all honesty, what we would like to do is replace existing infrastructure because we really need to.
Yeah. So what kinds of things, I mean, so you're saying everything in the alternates is basically off the table?
That is correct.
And now we're cutting into the base programming?
Yes, that's correct.
Which might be things like your flushable white filter housing and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah. How do I go backwards? Up arrow, okay. So, yes, we're looking at things on the base bid, which is right over here. And we've been talking, I've said this more than once, the main pump stations, Sohegan and Thornton's Ferry, they are in dire need of repair. I mean, they are just in dire need of repair. The clarifier mechanisms, well, if you can't separate the solids from the water, it's kind of like, what's the point?
Yep.
We have to have emergency generators that work. We actually can't find batteries for our emergency generators right now. We actually had to go online and I think we spent an enormous amount of money on batteries so that we could keep our emergency generators going because they're 1970 generators, so they need help also. If you look at the chlorine building and the electrical upgrade, maybe that can wait just a little bit. There is piping that we do absolutely need to replace and there's some that maybe we can, we can hold off. So we're doing that entire evaluation right now, trying to figure what's absolutely necessary from a risk perspective because we can't afford to have a mistake. And what we're really focused on, on everything, is we're very lucky. It's a 51-year-old facility and we're not under any sort of consent order from EPA. So our primary focus is to do what we need to do to make sure that we always have the flexibility to be able to make the decisions.
Okay, and you're obviously making sure that you're not going to fix things that you'll have to tear apart to fix the next piece?
Of course.
And so some things will have to get upgraded whether they're desperate now or not because if you don't, you'd end up tearing them back out to get to the next piece, so.
Right, so we're looking holistically.
Right.
It's a systems replacement, not piecemeal replacement where you only did one thing and then you have to, like you said, tear it out and fix it later on. No, it's holistic systems replacement that are going to be all set.
Okay.
Peter?
Paul or Sarita, when you guys usually come to us, I know, and maybe you guys haven't hit that phase yet, but you usually bring us payment and cost expectations and so forth out over the years. And have you guys done that for the 7.1 million that they're saying right now?
We haven't, that's all part of what we're working on to bring forward at the next level to see where we stand. I do also want to say that we are pounding the pavement, we're looking at everything. Just a couple of weeks ago, I sent an email to Kyle and Sarita saying, hey, call Eversource. Are there any incentives that we can get with what we want to do? Let's look out there, are there grants? We are looking at every possible avenue to try to get this project completed, the most bang for our buck to get this project completed. And, you know, that's why this also, this American Act, Recovery Act, is, we're looking into that too. Can we use that for this? What can we get with this if we do do that kind of deal? Because we do have the engineering, we did, one of the things is we did the whole plan so we know what, we are shovel, we are shovel-ready and we can get some, because there's deadlines of dates and we know we can get some of this money moving forward. We talked, the next subject is, we want to talk about a little bit for letters of support for Congressman Pappas. We even sent one of the projects forward to his group to look at, to see if they would, it would qualify for his infrastructure projects, and it did it unfortunately. But we've looked into those, we looked, we're trying to turn over every rock and look under every stone for all what we can get for money.
Yeah, you know, and I agree with Finley's concerns, but I also am of the mindset, if we're going to do the job, do it right, do it complete. And I guess that's something to see down the road, right?
Sure. It's going to be complete eventually, but we keep running into these situations where we just don't have enough to do it today, so.
Yep.
Stretching out work. I mean, we put the whole thing together originally because it was going to cost us so much more to break it into two pieces, hoping to get the whole thing together and get some cost savings. And so obviously, we're going to get some additional expense to have somebody come back later to do more work. But we're doing the best we can, given all of the situations. COVID hasn't helped and just because of the way it's generally messed up the economy and it's not good to blame everything on COVID. But it is, I mean, I've been in my office in a year, so.
Everything is starting up again. And therefore, the competition for services and availability of the tradespeople and all that, all that, absolutely.
There's a tremendous lack of current employees and stuff, people are trying to rebuild.
One thing to keep in mind is, we're 50 years old or 51 years old, so are all the other wastewater treatment plants in the country. So that's one of the reasons why they're all flat out, because all of the plants need to be upgraded across the United States at this point.
Well, that's the whole thing that they're trying to push this whole infrastructure plan for, is that so much of our infrastructure has aged along with the baby boomers and we need to deal with it. So you're coming back to tell us some more, as soon as you get more information?
Soon, I hope.
I'm assuming it's just a presentation of options, it'll be a whole combination and we'll have to make decisions, right?
Yes.
Yes. Nope, you're right.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, or thoughts at this point?
Thank you for the heads up.
Yeah, I was going to say thank you for the heads up, I just, I'm not enthralled with the idea of a phase four. You know, I just, I understand, I'm just saying, I'm just...
We'll deal with it when we have to.
I know.
Nobody is.
So I just want to say something.
Uh-oh.
You know, phase one, we did, I think, what is it, almost 20 years ago? We did a, an upgrade to our solids removal facility. Now, that's been a large number of years ago. And I've made this analogy, like your roof, unless you have a steel roof, you've got to replace it after so many years. So as much as you don't want to have additional phases, I mean, other equipment that we've replaced, it's going to start aging out as well. And we have three more pump stations that are going to need to be upgraded over the next few years as well, because they're starting to age out as well. So I'm sorry for the bad news, but...
I was hoping you'd say five to 10, not few, but, okay.
Three to five? Okay, so that's my answer, three to five.
I'll go for five. No, okay.
Okay. Well, five to 10, I mean, we can't, we do our very best to keep things running.
I'm sure you do and I appreciate it. 51 years is a good long time for a sewer system, I'm sure. So thanks for your management and keeping it up. Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarita.
That brings us to Paul's letter of support to the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure Projects. The town council considered writing a letter of support for each proposed project submitted to the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, which includes replacing part of the Sohegan River pedestrian bridge and also the Babusik Lake-Turkey Hill Road Roundabout Project, submitted by Kyle Pock.
Congressman Pappas's office reached out to us, oh, I want to say at the mid-March, basically asking the town of Merrimack, do you have any projects that you want to include in this infrastructure? Congressman Pappas is working with the committee and he's allowed to bring 10 projects forward at the federal level. So do you have any projects you want to put in? I'm like, yeah, I got some projects. So Kyle, Kyle and myself, we sat down, we thought of some projects that we wanted, some infrastructure projects. And there were, there were some limitations under X amount of money, had to be done, they, the person said it had to be done by fiscal year '21 or calendar year '22. They weren't really sure, but basically shovel-ready projects that you can go ahead and do. And so the town of Merrimack put four projects in. They're all listed on Congressman Pappas's website, he has a link to it. We put four projects in, one was the pedestrian bridge, one is the Turkey Hill Roundabout, one is, was the, one of the pump stations, and a third one was an infrastructure for upgrade for dispatch and communications. Two of the projects were sent back to us saying they didn't qualify, dispatch and the pump station. Two of the projects where we're coming in front of the council tonight for letters of support were pushed forward. One was pedestrian bridge and that was a maybe. The roundabout was, yes, disqualified. Now, when I talk about this being very competitive, it is very competitive. Tomorrow, Kyle and I have four minutes to talk about the four projects. We got a minute per project to tell the committee why it's needed in the town of Merrimack. So this letter of support will go a long way with the committee, that you have the council backing, we have the council's backing to present these as they move forward. There was over 225, the list just kept on going on and on and on. And we're talking anywhere from bear cats to three and a half million dollar new bridges for, or new road improvements and things of that sort. So there's a wide range and a wide range of communities. It's every community that Congressman Pappas is involved with, was able to submit into this, into this infrastructure plan. So with that being said, we're coming before you for letter of support and Kyle has drafted a couple of letters of support for the council, basically giving the town council, saying, yes, we support these projects moving forward. For the pedestrian bridge, it says that we, it's in our CIP program, it's in our, it's in the 10-year bridge program, however, it's funded later on. We would have money with our match, if we had a match, any money in our capital reserve fund set aside if we needed to match money. And what the estimates are for it and why it's important to the town of Merrimack because it's a walking trail and things of that sort. Once again, don't know all the limitations and all the strings, so to speak, that might be attached to this money with it, but this is, then, once Congressman Pappas moves his 10 projects forward, whoever's on this committee gets to bring them in from their community, so this is nationwide money. And we weren't told, and I guess we can ask that question, how much money is out there federally for these programs? Because like I said, it is very competitive. But to have two of our projects move forward to the next step is, says a lot about the preparation and being shovel-ready and being able to do this and move forward.
Move approval.
Motion made by Bill to approve sending the letters.
Correct.
And seconded by Barbara.
If I can have a friendly amendment and have Town Council Chair Koenig sign the letters?
For the council.
For the council?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you, do you want to hear what the letters say or do you want to just, or Kyle, do you have anything to offer at this point in support of the motion?
No, I think Paul covered everything pretty well. I did sit in on a Zoom conference with a number of Pappas's supporters, his aides, that talked about the program last week. And as Paul said, it is very competitive. It's, the projects are being sent to the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, they kept calling it the TNI, I had to look it up. But he only gets to submit 10. And as Paul said, the list is over 200 projects already. So while we hope for good news, and we'll certainly put our best foot forward in our four minutes tomorrow, we'll see how it goes. They did give an indication of the package that the president is currently working on, which is the bigger transportation package that hopefully would promise more results on other kinds of projects, including, we hope, the wastewater project. One of the things, just to kind of step back on the previous conversation, we, if funding becomes available, we are certainly very well positioned because we have the approved bond, we wouldn't have to have a special meeting to say it was a 20% match. We have the bonding to support that 20% match. By the same account, on road and bridge infrastructure projects, we have the capital reserve fund and the council has done a great job of saving for those. So we'll be very well positioned for some of those shovel-ready projects and, you know, with any kind of luck, we'll get the, you know, the same benefit we did on the Turkey Hill Road Bridge with the ERA funding. I guess that's all I have to add is...
Hopefully our preparation will. Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
In terms of the bridge, I think one of the things you might be able to push is that this town has been divided in half by the highway and the pedestrian bridge will offer accessibility between two parts of the town?
Correct.
So in the, I tried to keep, I tried to keep the letter of support short. In the long form question and answer, I can actually read you what I wrote.
Is it similar?
In the submission.
Line melding, that's right.
It's almost word for word.
The pedestrian bridge is a vital connection in the town's trail system, connecting the town across the east-west divide created by the Sohegan River and the northwest divide created by the FBEVER Turnpike. Bridge allows connection of the town center, schools, businesses, and residential areas. Is that what you were thinking?
Exactly, yes. So the geographical feature and the turnpike, of course.
And there's very minimal pedestrian kind of access.
And this one bridge is the connector for those four sectors. And that's really the point, we're going to drive home tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
That's what we're driving home in our minute.
It is very unique.
Right.
Being able to increase the accessibility of one part of town to another, rather pedestrian.
Correct.
That is unique.
And when the connection was made in 2011, it opened all of that up. And to have that connection broken unexpectedly, those are the points we really want to drive home is, we, the town supported for so many years this connection, we finally got it and now it's broken and we need to get it back and we frankly don't have a funding source for it. So this is really, really our only hope at this point.
But I think it's pushing the uniqueness of it.
Correct.
You say there's an east-west divide created by the Sohegan River, but the Sohegan is running east-west.
It's a northwest divide, north-south divide by the Sohegan.
You say connecting the town across the east-west divide created by the Sohegan River.
Okay.
I think it's a north-south.
It is.
And then you say, and the northwest divide created by the FBEVER Turnpike, which is probably an east-west.
East-west, yeah. I got my...
Just something to reread.
My directionals incorrect.
Yeah, I had a thought, but I forgot it. Anyways, regarding the rotary for that, have you included the safety factors, the numbers of accidents?
We did, yeah.
That are spurring us to do that project?
Exactly right, yep. I think it was 25 accidents since 2012. Whatever the number was in the presentation Don gave to you folks, that's the number I put into the submittal.
In the submittal, not in the letter.
Right. Additionally, on the, you'll notice, you recall that Don asked for 660,000 as our estimate. In the program submittal that I made for this, I bumped it up by 25% because even though it's, you know, we're ready to construct the project with town money, if we get federal funding, we still have to go through the NEPA process, the environmental review.
Right.
And we have to use their rules. So there's generally a 25% cost increase just for that piece. So I asked for 25% more than 660,000. I think it's $800,000 more. Yeah.
Okay.
It's amazing that other bridge costs us 10 grand.
I know.
Yeah.
A lot of things are cheap.
So are there any other questions on the idea or ideas? Seeing them, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor of sending the letters of support from the town council, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 600.
Thank you. Good job. Hopefully we have.
Yep.
You've been very lucky for us, Kyle. Knock on, I was going to say knock on what?
Knock on wood.
We've been able, and I think that really does say something about, we've really, and you have been, the department and the town has been very proactive. They haven't, we haven't waited until an emergency's happened. We've been preparing and getting things done ready. And opportunities have come up, like what you've done with the state and the other federal. So hopefully we'll be, continue to be lucky. And congratulations in person for the rotary.
Thank you very much. That was unexpected.
Well deserved, though.
Okay. Okay. That brings us to sponsorship donation of Parks and Rec Department Summer Movie Nights, submitted by Parks and Rec Director Matthew Casperius, the town council to consider the acceptance of a donation in the amount of $600 from the Merrimack Lions Club to the Parks and Rec Department to sponsor Summer Movie Nights in the Park pursuant to RSA 31 colon 95-b and Charter Article 8-15. These funds are used to pay the licensing fees to publicly show movies. Paul, you were going to present this. Peter?
Mr. Chair, so moved. Let's cut right to the chase.
Close enough. Any questions, comments for the towns? I mean, I think it is pretty obvious. We've been doing this for several years in a row and, and we've been receiving these donations. And I think that this amount covers two movies to be held at Watson Park or at Abbey Griffin or?
Right now, we haven't decided where they're going to be. The other thing I'd like to mention is that this is the sixth year in a row the Lions Club has supported this program.
Sixth year.
That's excellent.
That's awesome.
A letter of thanks.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no more comments, all those in favor of accepting the donation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That was moved by Peter and seconded by Barbara. And number seven, acceptance of donations for Parks and Rec Department, Wasserman Park Function Hall, submitted by Parks and Rec Director Matthew Casperius, the town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $2,200 from the Rotary Club of Merrimack and previous donations in the amount of $2,731.43 from Eagle Scout Project surplus funds to the Marks, to the Parks and Rec Department to be used towards the installation of acoustic sound panels in the Wasserman Park Function Hall, Al, pursuant to RSA 31 colon 95-b and Charter Article 8-15.
Move approval.
Motion was made by Bill and seconded by Barbara to approve the acceptance of the donations.
With the, with the thank you note to the Rotary Club?
Will do, please. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
This money, I, I wanted to make sure that the scout money was donated to the Wasserman Park and not just to the particular projects that they had been working on. And I've been assured that, that there were donations for Wasserman Park and so this will work very well. If there are no other comments, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 600. Which brings us to minutes. Minute approval for March 11 of 2021.
Mr. Chairman, move the Thursday, March 11, 2021 Town Council meeting minutes with one change, unless Barbara has more.
Okay.
Page two, line 46.
It's not next dial, it should be nixle.
That's all I had.
Is that the meeting that I was asking?
Uh.
Yes.
Is it?
It was the last meeting, right?
No.
Oh, well, sorry.
This is April. This is the first meeting of March.
March 11.
Okay, there's one after one, the last one.
Correct.
Sorry, I was here.
You remember this discussion, right?
We, we, we know you were here.
Perhaps I wasn't.
I could look through real quick and see if you made any comments.
Well, it's funny because we, we had, we had caught up with the minutes, so I made an assumption. See what happens?
There you go.
That this was the last meeting and I wasn't here. And I went, I wasn't. Apparently I was at this one, yes.
So.
Forget I said that, okay?
Okay, I forgot it. On page three, line 33, it says, "Design a program that is tailored the, a person's individual needs." I think it's to a person's individual needs. And on page six, line 15, it says, "Motion was made by and seconded by to encourage the 275th Anniversary Planning Committee." We ought to put in who made the motion if we can figure out who that was. I don't remember who it was, so.
Perhaps it was me, I don't know.
Might have been Nancy.
Go back to the video.
Go back to the video for that one.
Well, we can check the video, right?
Yeah.
Does somebody remember?
I, I don't.
What's that? What?
Okay. So, Peter?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a correction to the minutes.
Oh.
This will be my first and only correction to the minutes. And you guys may deny it, okay? But page six, line 19 and 20, where it states $1,000, should there be a period zero zero at the end of that?
If you want it.
This is an attempt.
I think we should put a comma, zero, zero, zero in.
I think we should accommodate Counselor Albert for his parting.
It's, it's a parting gift, so.
Come on, it's an attempt, okay?
We can give him a parting gift.
Sure.
We're adding cents after $1,000.
A week and a half after the election before the next meeting, so. So this is your last meeting. And I'm bringing it in, I'm sorry.
What's that?
This is his last meeting? Oh my gosh.
This is why I'm making this, you know.
This last minute.
I figured you guys were all following your cheers.
I would do that, but they'd get it on TV and then Becky would have it on her screen.
Forever, trust me, forever. They still play it.
Actually, that may not be your last meeting because we have to wait so many days.
Just one week and the meeting's not for a week and a half.
Okay, because that, one year was weird. The election had already happened, but they were swearing in because you have to wait for a recount. Then you have to wait a certain amount of time.
After the recount, was it? Yeah.
One time.
I mean, we've had meetings the week after the election before the end of the Friday recount period.
Correct. So that, so that all those same counselors were still there.
Yes.
We could have a special meeting on the 15th.
In honor?
In honor of Peter.
I don't think I deserve that honor.
We might, given those discussions I've heard have a non-public on that week anyway, so. Okay. So with those corrections, including Peter's addition on page six, any other, any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 600.
Mr. Chair, I've missed who was the second on that, I'm sorry. Who was seconded? Barbara?
Barbara, I think.
Yes.
Who, you?
I made the motion.
I did.
Barbara seconded.
The only reason why I'm asking is we have a new minute taker. So just would like to get that out for her.
Thought these minutes were nice and concise, given the, the length of the meeting and stuff like that.
I agree.
Good job. That brings us to comments from the press. Comments from the public? Come on, you're the only public here right now. I tried. Okay, comments from the council. Nancy?
Well, I'm not prepared for this because I honestly forgot this was your last meeting, Counselor Albert. So I, I have to say something. And I wish I had something witty. If I had, if I had thought about it before, I would have perhaps thought of something.
I didn't prepare.
But I just wanted to thank you for being such a pleasant counselor. I think, and that doesn't mean we haven't disagreed. And that's part of the, the pleasantness of it all. I think we've been very lucky in the combination of people that we've had on the council that represented great diversity in the town. And you have added to that diversity in a very positive way. And I just want to thank you for that. I've really enjoyed it. I'm going to miss you. But I also am jealous of your, oh, your plans for your future too. So for you and your wife Kathy, enjoy it.
Thanks, Nancy.
Anybody else?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm going to miss Peter. He's been wonderful. And for all the reasons Nancy said, it's just, I always consider this my little family away from my family. It's with all the different people who've gone through, it's always an enjoyable time. But I have to point out my favorite motion that Peter made back about, I don't know, a few years ago. And it was, I think it was $20,000 line item in the budget to renovate an old ambulance into a crim, a crime scene investigative unit. And he wanted the full-out $100,000 full-blown machine. And so he made the motion. I think Bill Boyd seconded for discussion, as he said. And, and he, it was a 6-1 vote and he, he was, he kind of flinched a little bit. And I said, we've all been there, so. But anyhow, it's, it's been a great time, Peter. And no texting when you leave. That's it. Thanks for everything.
Finley, I'm honored to have been part of this family.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually got two things. First off, Peter, I am going to miss you. I wish you and Kathy the best of success with your future endeavors. And I do echo what Counselor Rothaus said, and especially Counselor Harrington. I think you have elevated the conversation on how we've grown this community over the, over the last couple of years. I think the, your service to the Conservation Commission has been second to none. You, you've got us talking about a conservation officer. I hope that's something from a policy perspective that this council can pursue because I think it's, it's desperately needed. So we have you to thank for putting, putting that bug in our ears. But some of the things you brought in, in terms of the budget discussion, the, the pandemic last year that we went through with, with the conversations regarding, you know, our parks and conservation areas, you, and, and as it relates to the, the water discussion in town that we've had regarding San Gaben, you've, you've, you've been at the forefront. You've been thoughtful and, and you, you most certainly have, have led from the front on the, on those particular issues. So I certainly want to thank you on the bottom, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for, for educating, educating us and, and being a part of, of this town council. We are going to miss you. And I mean that sincerely, Peter. You and Kathy are going to miss you horribly. And then on the second note, ironically, Maureen actually texted me, Maureen Mooney, that is. And she informed me that House Bill 236, which is the requirement on statute of limitations on civil actions related to perforal alcohol and polyfluoroalkyl substances, passed the House today. So I think that's great news. It goes on to the Senate. I certainly want to thank Representative Mooney, Representative Haley, and everybody else in the community that has been, you know, actively involved on this particular issue. Obviously, the conversation's going to continue, but I think our legislative delegation deserves a lot of credit for, for shirping that bill through the House and getting it on to the Senate. So I wanted to communicate that and, and thank, thank the, the House members for their work on that issue. So. And thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Barbara?
Also, 135 passed as well. And I believe that's the one for the MDT.
Correct.
That one passed as well, so that will go crossover. Yep. I got that from Representative Haley as well.
Just be happy.
Well, it's insider information.
It should be good for something.
Yeah, I got to use it.
Are you sure it's reliable?
I know. I'll let you know. Also, and I've already told Pete, we're going to miss him. So.
Pete, you could say something, sure?
I, I would like to, thank you. Mr. Chair, you know, I just, I want to say when I came into this position that I, although having worked for the town, I wasn't quite sure what to expect. I, I did, I've known all you folks for a long time. And, you know, you guys, you're thanking me for four years, but you guys have been here a lot longer, Barbara excluded, but she's dedicating herself now. So, you know, I appreciate that. I'm honored by the fact that you guys are thanking me, but you know, you guys need a lot of, a lot of kudos and thanks. We've been, it's been an adventure the last couple of years, if you think about it, between the water issues and the pandemic and stuff. And so I just want to say, you know, to the folks out there, the three or four people still listening, that one, you know, this is a group of people that were dedicated to the town of Merrimack. I truly believe that. I've worked with all of you. There's not a D, there's not an R. What I loved about this level of politics, the local level of politics, is there's an M behind everybody's name here. And that's it. And that's the feeling I've got. And I have appreciated the ability to express my opinion, even if people dissented. And, and we've always treated each other with mutual respect. So it's been a pleasure and an honor working with all of you. I also want to say to the, to the town leadership, Eileen, she's done a great job. We've got, you know, we've had, we have a succession here with Paul. We haven't had to go on a hunt. You know, a lot of these, a lot of these positions, we've hired from within, fire chief, police chief. So, and they're all really good people from the folks you saw tonight, the DPW director and his staff. We're very lucky in that aspect. And then there's the, the line, the folks out there working, plowing the roads and with the police department and fire department. This town's in good condition. And I believe it's going to continue there. I see we've got a couple of prospective folks that want to be on the council. I think both, they're both good people. And I think that it's nice that they want to step up. And this is a great position. It's been a great experience. So I'm done now. I just want to say thank you.
Okay. Well, I want to make a public service announcement. Like I said earlier, there's three ballots on the ballot Tuesday, not just town and school, but also the state ballot. It's critically important. We need people to come out. We need everybody to vote, vote and give us our, your opinion of, of how things should be and where they should go. And, and this time is a special opportunity to, to speak out across both town governments and, and state government as well. And I'm sure you've been inundated with things and you've seen the, what did Tim used to call them, spring flowers or something?
Oh, yeah, the flowers. I think.
All the signs around. And I'm sure they will come down very quickly after the, after the election because we don't need them up anymore. But, but please do support your town. Come on out and vote. It's, it's safe. It's not a problem. We can handle it. We've handled a couple of elections now with the COVID issues. And so we urge you to come on out and visit with us. We, as council members, will be out there doing our job. Bill won't. Because he's not allowed to be an election official for this one because he's not on the ballot as an election official. But we'll, we'll be doing our job as diligently as always and, and urge you to come out. And second, Peter, I, I really have enjoyed having you on the council. I was a little, I was a little nervous when you first signed up. Because of your background with the police, I was concerned that you might allow that to sway your opinion a little bit. And you've always been a good, strong advocate for our first responders, both police and fire. And that's a great thing. And it's been, added a lot of diversity to some of our discussions and a lot of background information in some of our discussions.
Yeah.
Which has been very good. But I, I have to admit that I'm extremely pleased with how well it's, it's been comfortable working with you, the back and forths, the discussions and all those kind of things. So glad to have had you for three years. Wish we had you for another three. But I wish you the best moving forward for whatever, whatever your retirement brings you. I'm looking forward to that someday, but with my finances, it isn't going to be for a while. So good luck with that. And if one of us gets retired, we'll come back and say goodbye or something like that. But there's, there's four people on the ballot for town council, so, for three positions. And we'll, we'll see where that life goes.
We'll see.
If there's nothing else.
Go ahead, Peter.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
For adjournment?
Oh, motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second, motion to adjourn by Peter Albert, seconded by Nancy Harrington. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Past is 600. We are adjourned.